Welcome, everybody, to the Zoom Board meeting on March 27th. My name is Marty Aikens. I'm the chairman. My left board members, Mr. Chin, Mr. Frankel, Mr. Himmel, Mr. Ray Dell. My right and left, the clerk, Ms. Murphy, behind me, Commissioner Duke, the head of Inspection Services. If you have cell phone or pager, please put it on vibrate or silent. Not to interrupt the meeting, so we don't have phones ringing. If anyone's going to testify tonight, please stand up and raise your right hand.
You saw him, he said, tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to waive the reading of the minutes of the February 27, 2018 meeting.
Second. On the motion, CNN on favor?
Aye.
Close?
Affirmative.
I have some changes in the agenda tonight. Case number Z-18-5, 33 Edison Park, and want them over till April 10th. You have a motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion in case Z-18-5, Edward J. Page for a variance to convert existing simple family home into three one-bedroom residential units by raising the roof to create a third floor and constructing a rear addition on the premises number 33 Edison Park.
Second?
Second.
On the motion, CNN on favor?
Aye.
Close?
Affirmative.
The case number Z-17-108, 365 Newport Avenue LLC, looking for April 24th. On the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion with regard to Z-17-108, 365 Newport Avenue LLC, for a variance to construct a new 14-unit residential structure on the premises number 365 Newport Avenue Quincy.
Second. On the motion, CNN on favor?
Aye.
Close?
Affirmative.
Case number Z-17-117, they're looking, that's McDonald's Real Estate Company, he's looking for 522, May 27th.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion with regard to Z-17-117 to continue the case to 522 in the matter of McDonald's Real Estate Company for a special permit to reconfigure the drive-through use on 273 and 295 Hancock Street, so that one menu board in the associated canopy will be removed, and the other menu board will be moved approximately 14 feet, and the other canopy will be moved approximately 12 feet onto 295 Hancock Street on the premises number 273 and 295 Hancock Street Quincy.
Second. On the motion, CNN on favor?
Aye.
Close?
Affirmative.
And the new business, case number Z-18-11, looking for April 24th, if Todd Egan and 927.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to move Z-18-11 to April 24th in the matter of Todd Egan for a special permit floodplain variance to demolish the existing structure and construct a new nine-unit multi-family residential structure on the premises number 927 West Street.
Second. On the motion, CNN on favor?
Aye.
Close? One last one.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to Z-18-14, I make a motion to move that case, continue the case to April 10th, 2018, in the matter of Davis Lucci for a variance to construct a two-story condition on the premises number 105 Quincy Street.
Second. On the motion, CNN on favor?
Aye.
Close?
Affirmative.
And the old business, case number Z-17-110, James Trotter for a variance to change from a single family to a two-family home on the premises number 66 Bicknell Street.
Good evening.
Evening.
So, I guess, just a pre-asked what you did last time?
Yes.
We met with Mr. Duke as we suggested. I provided a plan, and actually, the plan is provided by you and Aikens, if I understand. They're almost identical, where we remove...
The bathroom.
The bathroom. Different, so we remove that bathroom. But we're back to our 201 kitchen design now, instead of having all kitchen plus one new kitchen design, rather than have one design for both units there.
I know there's a picture window that you wanted to save, correct?
I think we have related, didn't we?
I mean, if you, what's the difference of putting this wall straight right here? Just having a building go all right tender. Why wouldn't you do that, instead of this whole zigzag of foundation here? Just put one piece here.
You could do that, except the setbacks don't allow enough space for the landing. That's the reason for that. So, if you allow the landing to protrude a couple of feet, then, yeah, I think that would be easier on the foundation and on everything else that is...
You have, you have, all right, all right.
See, it also won't be his cost, which is something we're trying to...
Increase costs?
Increase costs. So, if you increase those...
It might decrease the cost. I don't know, it might, it wouldn't really... You got one less wall, right?
Yep. Like I said, the purpose of that zigzag was to fit the landing with those two feet. So, having two feet of a landing encroaching onto the setbacks is really where we were trying to...
And that's a direct roof.
It's nothing really obstructing it.
I mean, would you be an objection to making that straight, putting that landing on the side?
I just want to make sure we're talking about the same thing.
Yeah, yeah. Right here. Instead of doing this here, whole thing, do this. Square way you go.
Yeah.
And just look, and I got one wide open building. So, this is all open? Yeah, pretty much, just put the drive over here.
And this is the...
Just put the drive in.
Yeah.
The cabinets are coming out.
Oh, I'm sorry, I think you were talking about...
No, because I'm saying the landing's here already, right? Coming in. I'm just talking about this here. You're talking about...
The zigzag, the purpose of leaving this window...
The window.
Well, the window's right here, so...
And that, since the window's already gone, it's not there, it's a patio there.
Right. Now, you got your whole house, you need the whole backyard back here, and it's one home straight. Your idea, you would try to leave this floor big. Right, right. Get rid of that, and make it one small home, one big floor, so they get a big, and it just looks, it'll look twice as big from here, when you're in this part of the town, just one big home.
Where would the kitchen be?
Kitchen's over here.
Oh, the kitchen's over there already, yeah, yeah.
So, they're taking this out. This is already gone.
That's already gone.
Just this here, we're just having like a corner wall, so if they do that, the home would have a flaw, and if you look at it, you'd have a nice part of the house.
I just, I'm not very...
It would look a lot better.
So, our concern was, this might increase with cost, but I was just talking about, just to the desire, because we're removing the bathroom, it would probably come up a lot, so that's...
So, you want to put that wall back in?
So, that wouldn't be a problem for us, if that's...
And it'd be one floor, you'd have a whole floor of your house. Look at it.
Pretty wise, it would be a lot easier going.
You know, you're open. You know, why open?
They get more square foot.
Correct. The east wall. So, here's one part. See that jargon, it's got a new copy right here, where they put the addition, put that straight across, right here. So, now, you're a floor of your house, just falls right into this wall. East wall, just continue, instead of the jargon in there, like that. It was all about saving that window, preventing all that window on there. No, no, the lens in front of it.
Cleaner.
He's thinking the other side.
Doesn't look like two separate houses.
Don't look like, right.
Bad.
It looks like one continual home, and the inside is one continual floor right through. Okay. I know we already had people speaking. You can have a seat. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this, now that there was a little change? First call, second call? Third call, close? Yes. There's nothing new, so... Who wants to speak in the hall? Hold on, I think David was... Let me remember their...
Other changes.
The change in favor?
As well.
In favor?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, with regard to Z-17-110, James Trotter for a variance to change from a single family home to a two-family home on the premises number 66 Bicknell Street Quincy, I make a motion to grant the variance, subject to the removal of the jog, in continuation of the east wall, straight across.
Second?
Aye.
On the motion, CNN on favor?
Aye.
Close? So, move. Want to copy that? Anyone? Anyone want to copy? Need anymore?
Put more copy.
Yeah, you got them right here. They don't cost money. Further on the old business, case number Z-18-1, Simon Lamb for a variance to convert a two-family or three-family on the premises 172 Vassal Street. Is the applicant a representative here?
Yes.
You have the floor.
Hi, my name is Simon Lamb from Eaton Waterville Quincy, and I'm the owner, Wei Zhao.
Wei Zhao Jane? Yeah.
172 Vassal Street. Looking to convert a two to a three family.
Yeah, what are you doing in the back?
The back? With you move the, do a little more paving, so you can cover it for more parking.
And how big's the paving? That's already a three family, already, correct? There's three apartments there now.
Yes.
Huh? And how did that happen? Before coming there?
Believe it's the previous owner, they converted to a three family, and they had a violation, and he sold the house, Mr. Jane bought it, and not knowing that was converted...
Right, right, I got it, I got it.
Because on cover record for the MRF, they do listed energy.
Well, they can think of listed, it doesn't matter, you know, you were paying taxes, probably in a two-family, that's why it's in violation.
Yeah.
So, I mean, he shouldn't went out, he knew what the taxes were, that's where a two-family home, someone converting. There's no parking there right now for three families, as far as I'm concerned. I don't care what you do with that property, there's just no parking. There's a single driveway.
Single driveway, and there's a garage in the back.
And what are you going to do, you're staying in the back driveway?
You think...
You're going to have four staff parking?
It goes to the side, to the back of the house, because the driveway, the garage is going to go straight, and it's the...
You live in the garage here?
Yes.
It'll never work, never. It just should never work, a three-family, ever. And that way you do it, it'll never work. The only way you do that right, really, make that, you can rip down that whole backyard and do it right, okay? The only way, if you have cars in there, go around that corner, park in, in an angle, and then come out, otherwise it won't work, so... Anyone else have any other questions?
No, I don't, not at this time.
So...
So, if he levels the...
It doesn't matter what you do, how you going to, how you going to get cars in there to come in and out? And how you going to, in the winter, how they going to get off the street by?
I think it's enough room for the, for the full inside parking area.
There's not enough room for three different families. You have three different families on one driveway, a single driveway to get in there. How do you get in? And how do you get out? And how do people get out, three different families? You don't, you just can't. It's that parking, how can you? I don't know what to say, I really don't. It's like, it's like bizarre, I think. Duke. Now, if you got a violation in the property, you remember this case number?
I have it.
And, I mean, I'm trying to look at this, I mean, we can take another look at it, go back and look at that property in the backyard, and see what green space we can keep, and how we can lay it out, and maybe put pavers to keep the three units that's there, but it's just...
So, what you saying?
Like someone did something illegally, and someone else was going to gain. Traffic isn't bad enough, stuffing three families, where there's two families in singles out there. It's like, why? And there's Residence A, isn't it up there?
Probably D.
The way it is, I can't. I mean, if you want to continue this, and come back, have another paving look, and look at what you want to do in the backyard, that's fine, but the way it is, I don't know, you guys, what your thoughts are on it.
I agree with Mr. Chairman, see how you can get that many cars in there, and keep the, the structure, here it is at the end, the driveway, the structure on the other side, maybe it's a chance, but it's still difficult.
Yeah, the, the house is almost as big as...
Yeah, I'm also, I'm also concerned about the lack of green spaces, kind of result if you pave over anything back there. So, my thoughts.
I agree. Same.
Agree.
Want you to meet with Mr. Duke.
Okay.
Right? Only continues to April 10th, and then you'll have the chance to see Mr. Duke, and he can put something in the back, and if not, still go on in next week.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion with regard to Z-18-1, Captain Simon Lamb for a variance to convert the two-family home to a three-family home on the premises number 172 Vassal Street Quincy, that the matter be continued to April 10th.
On the motion, CNN on favor?
Aye.
Close? So, move. April 10th. See with Mr. Duke during the week, all right? Thanks. Further on to tonight's agenda, probably where everyone's... Z-18-4, Allison McLean, for a special permit floodplain, finding to reconstruct a non-conforming structure on premise number 149 Rockland. Counsel.
Close enough. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and board members. My name is Jim Burke, I'm with the Sel Burke Associates, Sel Burke Salle now, with offices in Quincy. I'm a civil engineer that was hired to permit a, a new single-family house at 149 Rockland Street. It was in front of you guys before, and we threw without prejudice, there was, we received an order of conditions from the Quincy Conservation Commission, which was appealed by the abutter. We went through superseding, and adjudicated here, and we've since passed through that, and received a superseding order of conditions from DEP. That prompted a new filing with the revisions that DEP, along with the 91 license permitting people requested. The footprint itself, from the previous submission, remains the same, so 32 by 28 building footprint. We had a concrete foundation originally, that has since changed to piles, we have 35 piles right now, to support the structure, including the deck. There is, the deck was reduced, the 91 people, along with DEP, required that deck over the water be exactly the same size, so you'll see that the deck has a little bit of a bite out of the, the left-hand side, where the stairs come down to the beach. What we're asking for, for this particular proposal, is to maintain the side yard, it's at 7.8 feet, it's pre-existing non-conforming, we're looking to maintain that, we're looking to bring the building forward. The existing building currently has living space hanging over the, the seawall, we're pulling it forward to comply with current, you know, wetland and floodplain and all sorts of other regulations associated with that. So, bringing it forward to 11.1, which is pretty much in line with the existing homes in the area. It's, we're bringing it from 17.1 to six feet to 11.1, so we're looking for a waiver for that. There's also requirement for a single-family house to have three parking spaces, right now, the lot has none. We are providing, since we're bringing it up on piles, we'll be able to sneak two cars underneath, and provide at least two parking spaces, but we require three, that's for in Residence A, and what's the last one? Oh, floodplain. And we'll need to work the floodplain as well as the number of stories. Since we're working the floodplain, we're bringing the footprint finish floor to elevation 18.5. The Zone A flood elevation is 13 in the area, with wave action, that's why DEP required the piles, and it's also moved outside of the velocity zone, which is in front of the seawall, which is elevation of 16. So, all the living space is going to be above current flood elevations, including the, including velocity. The profile, the elevation provided by the architect that's in the package shows a kind of a flat roof supported by trusses, which reduces the height of the building. Height of the building is 32 feet, and we're underneath the 35-foot requirement, so there's no building height issue relating to this project. So, it's really, I mean, I think with regards to what we're proposing, what's out there now, we sat down and talked to both city councils, previous city council where they originally filed, as well as the current, Mr. Ratafie, and they didn't seem to have any problems with the, with the proposal.
One second.
Sure.
The B-zone, you say 16.
Correct.
And you have to be two feet above that, correct?
My understanding, as long as the structural members of the, the structure itself erupts side of that, then it's, it's fine.
So, we're 18.5 now.
18.5, correct.
And that gives you two feet, two and a half, two feet five inches above the B-zone, correct?
Correct.
Why is that?
Gives you room to, you know, have room to, you know, bring the cars in off the street, and, you know...
I mean, which has 18, and which, how high is your building?
Right now, right, so...
10 feet off the ground, ground level?
Correct. So, piles are, the garage floor's at nine, I believe. And top of pile is, well, and then top of, and minus the, whatever structural aspects, you're probably looking at 14, 16 inches support. So, you get 18.5...
Now, just to the, to the lower beam, to the lower part of the beam.
You might as well go top of pile, because that's going to be the structure.
Yeah, the pile, the top of the pile, that you'd be...
Top of pile, at 18.5 minus 16 inches.
So, so you're three inches, right, okay.
So, it makes it a little bit over eight feet from pile. From what I said, right?
Oh, 7... 9, 16, 7, 7.1, right? Okay. 9.16, now we're thinking, 9.4, 9.46, right? Yeah, 7.2, 7.25. Any questions? Those are my questions, just about the B-zone, and how high, you know, you had to get above that.
There was concern last night, too, about, you know, how a building's going to look, and the, it's a kit architect that's come in, but he did spec out some hardy...
Hardy plank.
Not the plank, but the trim and the shake.
What's he putting on the outside of the building?
Say it again?
What's he putting on the outside of the building, then? You said the trim's hardy plank, what's he putting on the outside of the building itself?
I don't, you mean...
What's it covered with?
When you cover, like the hardy, they have a hardy shake, the...
Yeah, right.
So, it's all hardy, all hardy material, hardy trim, hardy plank.
What is the difference between trim and...
Right, I think they're a little bit for like, kind of a cape top.
No, I know, they spend a ton of money, they know that, and they're going to make sure it looks nice, like, cold.
Yeah, sure. Did you notice anything over the past few weeks with the storms that we've had over there on that side?
You know, the, to answer your question real quick, no. You know, this property withstood the storm, and I believe that, you know, the abutters here tonight, they can speak to it, there were some erosion occurring on the abutting property that was observed, but this one withstood pretty well. You know, given the shape of the house, you know, I wouldn't have been surprised if it got swept out to sea, but it withstood it pretty good. So, yeah, so we're looking at, in the piles that are all out there now, that are kind of rotted and light, there's 10 of them, and we're going to be replacing all those with six less piles, I mean, I'm sorry, with six total piles, four less piles out of each.
All right. What do you get on your deck? How far is your deck, and how, you say you reduced the deck?
If, if you see, we used to have the deck squared off, the house, so this blue area here, that's where it was reduced, and that's because it, we're now, this house now comes in and runs down through here, and so this blue area here had remained the same.
Okay. Any questions? Anything? Thank you.
Thank you.
If anyone wants to speak in favor, anyone want to speak in favor? First call, second call, third call, call if I the hearing closed. Anything from the DPW letter? Is there a new letter? No, what did I give you? No, that was the other one, you, that was, that was the last one.
Chairman, letter dated February 2nd, 2018 from the DPW. We reviewed the submittal for the above- referenced project, and our comments are as follows. One, provide calculation to how the proposed 3/4-inch water service is adequate for the development, we recommend that a 1-inch pipe be used. Install a clean-out for the sewer service pipe, cut and cap existing sewer service at the back of the sidewalk. Four, cut and cap existing water service at the connection with the mains. Five, all abandoned structures should be removed or filled with dense grade and stone. Six, install survey monuments to delineate the public right-of-way, the monuments shall be set by professional land surveyor. Seven, upon completion of the project, as-built plan showing all utility building footprints, reference grounds and benchmarks defining the total site facilities and right-of-ways need to be submitted along with a digital CAD file. The plan should be stamped and signed by a professional land surveyor or professional engineer, and elevation certificate should be submitted if the property is in the floodplain. Further information is required, and these are...
I assume that, okay. Thanks. If anyone, close when decided. Step forward, state your name and address to record, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I'm Matthew Watzke, I'm here as counsel for the immediate abutters. It's Annette Tolarczyk. Her property is, you're looking at the subject property from the street, is to the left of it, Todd Machalek, whose property is immediately abutting and to the right of it, and Diane Willmott, whose property is directly across the street. Previously submitted, I hope the numbers have, a letter of March 5th, which was submitted via email to the board, and that laid out the legal analysis, as well as the facts. But I'm not going to reiterate all of that tonight, just trying to focus on, on some key items for you. First, just a quick response, the, the DEP and the wetlands process have not issued any final decision, and the DEP and the Chapter 91 process has barely essentially even begun the process, because the applicant has not completed the appropriate notice to the abutters, DEP hasn't processed that Chapter 91 license in the lease. We have provided comments to the DEP to explain how what's proposed with new construction, as the engineer himself just said, it's a new single-family house that's proposed, new construction on the beach in the, in the public trust plans is simply impermissible, it is not permissible under Chapter 91. So, there will never be a license issue for this project under Chapter 91 to build that So there will never be a license issue for this project under Chapter 91 to build that deck over the beach and into the beach. I would think that with the four northeastern coastal storm events that we have just gone through, one of which had that entire water body frozen solid with ice, and the water came up over the street, and the result was that at least one of the pilings of this very house got taken out to sea, the ice damage caused it, that it would be considered foolhardy to consider construction of a new deck in the V-zone. And that's what's proposed, and your bylaws prohibit construction of any structure, any new structure within V-zone. So they're proposing a project, I don't believe they've actually even asked for a variance, where no new construction is permissible, and the only characteristic that they're seeing warrants, whatever relief they're getting, is because it's in V-zone, so the very nature of the, of the zones to prohibit construction within velocity zone, flood zone that has wave action, and they're saying you want to rebuild in that zone, it's simply not permissible, a variance cannot be granted for that. The rationale for them to, to build the house as high as they're proposing, they have two components of the house that's making it excessively high. And we all know that a basic, a basic standard for grant of variances and special relief is that you only seek and you only get the minimum relief that's necessary in order to eliminate the hardship. So we all acknowledge that the basic living space of this house, and the interior living space of what's proposed, is within the A-zone. And appropriately, the house should be reconstructed so that it elevates the living space above the A-zone elevation of thirteen. But they're proposing elevate the entire new structure to elevation eighteen point five, and the only rationale for that is they want to have a garage that they can pull the two cars in, and they want to have at-grade access directly out of their main living space onto the deck, because the deck couldn't possibly be lower than eighteen point five or eighteen, because it needs to be elevated, assuming it ever got permitted, above the V-zones, they want to have a nice view, walkout onto their deck. They don't need the deck, which is six hundred and seventy-two square feet, if I remember from, from the plan. They're effectively doubling the footprint of this house, as what's proposed. They, they have pointed in the past to the Machalek house as an example of, well, he got the waivers that, that were necessary to build that house, we want to have exactly what he has. But the Machalek house, number one, is on exactly the same footprint as the, of the house that existed before it. The house that was before it was a three-family house, a much larger structure than any other neighbors, and it's only twenty-five feet of frontage, so the entire width of the house is only twenty-five feet. There was no other place to put off-street parking on the Machalek property, other than underneath the house by building it up higher. So the relief in that case was in fact needed to provide the height so that you could put a garage, put a car in a garage and then build your two stories of house above it. What the current applicant, Ms. McLone, is proposing is to have her house elevated, so she's got a nine-foot-high garage, and then also to have each of the stories of the house with over nine-foot-high ceilings inside, creating a house that's six and a half feet taller than it needs to be in order to give her the minimum relief necessary to be able to build or rebuild on this site and comply with the flood zone. So she's asking for more than she needs in order to be able to build a new house. Even if you were to accept the, the total footprint of the proposed house, the height of it is, is significantly higher than, than what's necessary in order to comply, and that additional height causes a burden on the neighbors. You have a relatively small house, very low small house that Ms. Larchik has, and the sideline that the proposed house is closest to is hers. So you go from a one-story house adjacent to her, only seven feet from the property line, to a three-story high-tech house adjacent to it, crowding her out. It also obviously will create this enormous barrier between the Wilmot house and the water as well. The applicant's proposing a much larger structure than what's necessary to, to simply replace the existing structure. It's one of the basic criteria that the courts use, that granted you have pre-existing legal non-conforming lat, and you arguably have a pre-existing legal non-conforming structure, but as the Supreme Judicial Court has said, the expansion of a residence's footprint and the expansion in living area will at the very least tend to reduce the living space previously existing on the lot and increase the density of the residential neighborhood, and creating a density and treatment between a non-performing structure and a non-conforming lot is one analytically and practically that should not be made, the two concepts are intertwined. And they would go on to talk about how that's, that's a burden that should not be imposed on, on abutting properties, that at least the impact that's proposed needs to seriously weigh and determine that what's proposed is the minimum necessary to, to be able to grant relief to this property so it's not incurring a hardship. Her hardship here can easily be resolved, she can rebuild, she can build a new home, but one that should have the same footprint as, as her existing home, and is no higher than is necessary to, to grant her the relief necessary. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else opposed around the side? Anyone else is going to speak, please come up front so we don't have to wait for someone to come up.
Hello, my name is Annete Talarchik, I live at 235 Rhoda Street and am a direct abutter to 149 Rockland Street. I was very surprised when the second set of plans came through that were essentially the same as the old set of plans that were withdrawn six months ago. The plans that thirty-one people in the neighborhood signed, the neighborhood opposition petition against. She is still proposing, now coming back around, the applicant has still not approached any of us to discuss feedback or hear our concerns. Since moving in, she's bulldozed onto the property, ripping up the fence, cutting down trees, and leaving the debris in the yard, lying the front yard since last summer. She's not maintained the property at all, leaving it abandoned, posting non-trespassing signs. And now, in the same vein, she's proposing to build a house ten feet off the ground, solely for the convenience of having a private deck that she can step out on. There is no hardship except that which she is bringing on to her neighbors. It's entirely possible to build a lovely home, and we hope that she does, on the existing footprint of the existing house, going up to twenty-five stories, just as variances allow for. I'm here, and I have been for each of the hearings, because I'm personally very affected by it, and everything that I love about my house, I stand to lose by this going up. Counselor McCarthy was very kind enough to come out on a Saturday about three weeks ago or so and sit with us, listen to the concerns. He asked us to put together a concise list, and I know he couldn't make it tonight, but he said that in advance he had passed that on to you.
There's a letter here that'll be written into the record.
Because I know he shared our concerns as well. So that's it, I just ask that you keep the house to a manageable size and protect the neighborhood, just as the setbacks and variances were designed to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else opposed around the side? Second call, third call, call if pile of hearing closed. I have a letter here from the council I want to read into the record.
Mr. Chairman, this is a, an email from Dave McCarthy, Ward 1 Counselor, addressed to the board, dated Tuesday, March 27, 2018. It states, as Ward 1 Counselor, and I put the representative of the owner several weeks ago, I found an understanding that this parcel and proposed structure was continued at least three times last year, and that the owner had gone back and done the proper due diligence to correct any problems identified in past ZVA hearings. The structure at 149 Rockland is a blatant issue, abandoned, and a new home would only be beneficial to the neighborhood. Numerous questions were asked by myself and sensible answers came forth during our meeting. I also met with the neighbors of 149 Rockland, both direct abutters and a neighbor across the street. They also agreed a new home would be a plus to the street, but they had concerns that are on record with the ZVA. I know these concerns have been reviewed, and I hope any further adjustments to the property will be made, so both parties are comfortable moving forward. The ZVA has the ultimate official determination, and they have reviewed this several times. I leave the decision to the ZVA, and hope that the changes that have been proposed by both parties have worked out tonight, so all can move forward.
The applicant, please, I'm opposed. I asked many times, through these hearings, that why does the house have to be level with the deck when it doesn't have to be? Why does it have to have a walkout, not a walk up to the deck? Why can't that drop two more feet? It'd still get cars in there that are five, five feet high.
Well, you know, the thing is, it still would end up being a storm, so you'd still have to grant variances.
I get it, I get it.
I meet, I meet building height, all right, so I'm not asking for that. I mean, I could actually, I could build a house, you know, set the piles at, say, thirteen, which would, again, not meet FEMA regulations because of, because of wave action at elevation sixteen, but, and, and go up, and put a cathedral ceiling up there, and go up to the thirty-five feet.
You can do anything you want, and ask the question why.
What, what we're doing, what we're doing.
I think it's right enough.
And again, and the abutter as well, who's going to run into the same thing? Her, her footprint is at the same elevation, so when she goes to sell her property, she's going to go through the same thing.
See, we, we, we're going somewhere else, Mr. Burke, please. I asked the question, my question was, I asked him to reduce the house so he could pull under with two cars and still make his, his height, because I don't care less whether they walk up to a deck, or walk down to a deck, or go flat to a deck.
We can look at, you know.
As far as I asked, as far as three times, and haven't gotten the answer, yes.
Okay, so as far as, as far as, you know, having enough headroom and room for cars to get underneath and off the street is the reason why, one of the reasons why to have the building at the elevation where it is, much similar to the abutter next door, so.
But that's, that's him.
Yeah.
And, and really, I don't care about him, I don't care what happened last week, we're talking about 149 Rockland, that's all I'm talking about.
Okay, so.
We're only here tonight.
Right.
So let's get to 149 Rockland.
Yeah.
What is it going to take? What could you bring that building down? That's all I asked before.
Okay, so the, to me, your garage floor is a no reason why.
All right, thank you. So the neighbor across the street, you try to get some of the view, she might not get none of it down, and, and that's the way it happens. I lost my view too, and I'm at the top of the hill, and I sat there and proved the houses to block my view.
Right.
Because, you know what, people got a right to build a house, I believe. And most neighbors work with neighbors to do the best they can under the conditions. And I understand this was not friendly relations from day one, it didn't go off right at the beginning. Now we're at the place where we're at now. The neighbors ask you, can you drop the house a little bit? I don't care about the deck, if you're going to take three feet, I've gone to many homes where I've taken three feet up in their deck.
Right.
Because of the way the house was built, and they didn't want to spend it though.
Okay.
And I know while you're building it, that's all I ask, if there's a way you could drop the, the house down. I know what you're doing, nine foots in, some people have ten foots in.
It's not, it's not the nine foots in, everything's revolving with regards to getting the cars off the property and under the house, okay? So the gutter of the street is at elevation nine, so the garage floor is at elevation nine. And so they.
You got nine and a half feet garage.
Well, that's the, that's, that's not, no, that's, no, because that's the finish floor.
Okay, so sixteen, twenty, all right.
So what I'm, what I'm talking, is, we went through this calculation earlier, so you get eighteen point five minus one point three.
Let me do this. Yep.
All right, and then, and then subtract elevation, subtract nine, and that's going to be the height of the pile out of the ground. So cars typically, you know, depending on the vehicle, anywhere from five and a half to six and a half feet high. You could probably work it so that the pile is seven feet off the ground, but top of, top of pile being sixteen, and then you'd add the twenty-two to that.
Still be at seventeen-five.
Yeah, it'd be a foot down.
So.
Yeah, because it's a foot, foot anyway, foot, foot, something. All right, here's what I'd like, I'd like, we've heard all testimony, there's going to be no more testimony here. Have Mr. Burke send an email to Mr. Duca, the final thing, before our next meeting, and we'll know what that bottom is and what their levels are, and then we'll know exactly what you can and can't do to bring that house down, at what point and what height off the ground it will be, all right? Fair enough? Foot's a foot, it really is, and if it don't match with her deck, well, she can walk up a foot, that's what it must be, and there's nothing wrong with that.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, anyone here?
The, the V-zone and the A-zone that we're looking at, so the, the V-zone essentially right now, is that only impacting the deck, is that?
That's correct.
Yeah.
So that's why we're at that base elevation of that, plus the garage.
I'll have to take a look at, you know, I'll look at that, I mean, yeah, we'll have to see what, what's required for that deck to be constructed in that area.
And do you know the history of the property, has that, has the zone changed there any recently? Like, are we looking at a product, like, are we bringing this house down?
They've all changed.
And then three years from now, we rezon this thing, the whole property's in a VE, and now we just, you know, I mean, is that, is that the potential?
Behind the wall, but it's, it's.
And it's already built at that point.
To me, this is almost two different, two different projects, just to me. One's the deck, one's the deck and one's the house. What can the house be built at? And then look at the deck separately, completely separately. Because it brings the house of the house down, which the V-zone out there for his deck is higher.
Right.
You have to be two feet, two feet above, so it's completely two different zones.
Yeah.
Two different heights.
Two different styles of construction.
We see a two-foot sea level rise in the next six years. You're just in the same, you're just in the same.
If I got to figure it out right, I think I'm living on an island.
You were for a little while this year.
Yeah, I was, a week ago, with no power, no nothing, right. Any other questions?
No.
The, it was stated, is there a DEP permit issue or a conservation issue?
There is a, there is a, yes, there is an order of conditions issued. There was an agreement at the Juggernautory hearing where we agreed to certain conditions for the stairs being particular on the deck that they had to be seasonal, removed during storm events and the like, a few other ones that were related to that. But there was an agreement to move forward with the order of conditions.
Did you get it yet?
It's a good question, I'll put that in my email.
Any others?
Are we contingent on that?
Yeah, so, ten.
No, no, I mean, are we contingent on that filing being completed before, because they need that to build anyways, does that impact us in our decision-making process?
That's the deck you're talking about.
It's everything, the whole lawsuit, yeah, the whole lawsuit, subject to an order of conditions that has to be issued by, at this point, by DEP.
All right. So you don't even know if you had that yet?
I'm pretty sure they came through, like I said, the attorney isn't here.
Could that be emailed too? Also, if you can get that, I don't know, within a few days, so we have time, I can email it to everyone, so.
I'll have, I'll have it sent out in a week.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion to move this to April 10th. It'll take five minutes.
I just got full quick. April 10th just got full quick.
With the got to case number C-18 dash four, capture Allison McClellan for a special permit variance flood plain finding to reconstruct the non-performing structure on the premises that is 149 Rockland Street, winsy, the motion to continue the matter to April 10th, and during that interim, that Mr. Burke provides Mr. Jay Duca with a copy of the final construction documentation, a copy of the order of conditions.
Yep.
A copy. And a copy of the order of conditions.
Second?
Second.
On the motion, stand down, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Danny Tan, three, special permit variance finding to change the use of three commercials to two, two bedroom units and one commercial unit, six fifty-seven Adams, to the council.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Rob Plumlee from Plumlee and Plumlee. If I may, uh, just wanna pass out a slightly revised, uh, just parking layout for this particular property. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, this was a matter that was first heard by this board on, I think, January twenty-third. At that time, it was proposed and presented, uh, for the conversion of six fifty, seven Adams Street from what had been used for many years as a multi-office, uh, use, uh, simultaneously, there were a number of uses there, uh, at the same time for, for many years. Uh, as requested the board, uh, because of, uh, my unable to, to meet with the neighbors and Councilor Kane, Councilor Kane had scheduled a neighborhood meeting, which we've had, um, with the neighbors, uh, I was able to speak to a few neighbors, um, at that time, the night of the hearing. So again, proposed and presented at that time was converting this multi-office use to two residential units, two two-bedrooms, and kind of the main portion of this property. Uh, there's a slight, uh, you know, minimal four hundred square feet of, of space, commercial space, uh, as well, uh, fronting Adams Street. At that time, was proposed, again, two residential units and four hundred square feet would be used, retail, at the time, as a nail salon. Uh, after speaking with neighbors that evening, and at the neighborhood meeting as well, I think the biggest concern was, uh, that retail component, uh, because a lot of the things the neighbors have experienced over the years, uh, over the years, they, they kinda conveyed to me, um, you know, holiday season, there's an Atlas Liquor Store there as well, got very busy, uh, there, people would park on Eddie Street, tax season, there was a CPA, uh, operating out of six fifty-seven Adams Street, at that time, very busy clientele coming in, uh, for returns and things of that nature, people would park on, on Eddie Street at that time too. The board had asked, asked us to kinda revisit this and see if, if there's anything we were able to do. So what we've done, we, we tried to play with the parking a little bit to show the board, um, I think we had seven originally on there, uh, what's required here would be really three to meet the residential requirement for parking, uh, and then two spaces for the, uh, the, the commercial component. So my client is, to try to, you know, satisfy the neighbors to can, you know, to propose a different use for the four hundred square feet, the two residential units would remain, um, proposed, but the four hundred square feet no longer retail, but just office space. We, we thought that was met, you know, well by, by the neighbors, they obviously still have their concerns, um, we feel what, what's been there for many years, uh, was certainly much worse, um, than, than what's proposed before this board this evening, uh, with the two residential units and, and just a real minimal, uh, you know, s- four hundred square feet of, of proposed office space. At this time, my client does not have, uh, a particular tenant, you know, for that space, uh, the commercial space right now, um, but again, we're, we're, it'd be an office, an office use and not, and not a retail use. I think Mr. DeRoche, uh, who is our surveyor, I think he added a fourth space in there, so the proposal is for the spaces in the back, the four spaces that are kinda at angles, um, would be, you know, primarily, would be for the residential, uh, units. And I think he had that fourth vehicle in there, an angle, just to be able to show the board, we can fit a space, uh, but there's also enough room to egress all the way through the site, uh, from Adams, uh, right to Eddie Street as well, uh, you know, if there's not a vehicle in the, uh, you know, on the, on the portion fronting, uh, Adams Street. Uh, I think we was trying to, try to convey that to the board as well.
I mean, that works good, except it's not, right?
Like, like many places, yes.
So we're right back where we were before. I guess, uh, you don't wanna make that like, uh, yeah, so always you got one spot designated for the, uh...
It's really, the one space, you know, we were thinking for, you know, uh, the, the business people, you know, that own the office space, that would, that own that particular company, uh, with, uh, coming off of Adams Street, you know, a vehicle would be able to park there. There's places pretty close to this building on Adams Street where you can actually park as well, I think, um, you know, in front of San Open and in front of the Dairy Freeze as well. I think it's limited right in front of this particular building, um, as far as, uh, the amount of time you can park right in front of the building.
I think it's just an eyesore, it's just, it just is an eyesore.
Yeah, I think, you know, looking back, I think it was built, you know, for residential purposes at one time, and over the years, like, like many properties in the city of Quincy, the people add on to them, and...
But it's an eyesore, it really is an eyesore.
Yeah. I think financially, economically, you know, it, it, it's needed, you know, the uses that we're posing to make this work for, for my client. Uh, but we feel the office is, is a pretty big change from what was proposed here in January, and that will help with, with parking concerns.
Questions?
I don't know what you're gonna do, the outside, are you gonna do construction remodeling to the outside, improvements, landscape?
Yeah, that was really something that came up at, at the neighborhood meeting as well, a lot of questions regarding that. Understanding that my client had purchased the property, it, it was vacant, you know, uh, he's, he's trying to, um, do what he can to, uh, to put it into good use, uh, to get some tendencies, to get a little bit of revenue coming in, uh, and then certainly plans to, to improve the, uh, the exterior of the building, uh, make it look a lot more aesthetically pleasing, you know, to the neighborhood.
Do you see a lot of noches, say, dirt around the parking area, is, is it gonna be paved, or is it gonna be landscaped?
Uh, yeah, I think that, certainly the corner, uh, fronting, uh, Adams and Eddie, uh, there'll be a lot of landscape there, uh, I think you'll certainly have your egresses from Adams, that's gonna, that will be paved, uh, but they're certainly gonna try to have as much as they're able to. It's, it's just, it's a, it's a type of property where parking is just so limited, and we're trying to get the, the cars off the street.
Do you, do you have anyone in the residences now?
They don't exist today. Yeah, it's all, it was all just, uh, commercial space, it was office space, there was a travel agency on the four hundred square feet, um, there was a CPA, there was, uh, there was a remixed, uh, real estate office as well, and all, all at the same time, they were operating.
Any questions?
Did you, did you guys explore any way to incorporate that four hundred square feet into the residential units and just make it all residential?
We did, they, they have, they have an architect here, uh, if you had a question for him, he could certainly answer that. I think that was, that was attempted to do that as well, uh, we just, you know, what do you, what do you do with it?
I don't know, maybe make, make living out of it. Get the units bigger.
Yeah, the units are big, um, it's, it's, it's a pretty good size, you know, speaking about...
Can I say something about that?
Yeah.
Just by the look of the, you know, the outside and everything, it's quite, quite difficult to sort of incorporate that into the, uh, residential portion, um, plus their different levels, the, the residential levels, like, five feet higher, you know, that's dangerous.
That's why it's an eyesore.
Yeah. Uh, but what, you know, again...
Is the handle any questions?
And we certainly appreciate the question, there will be improvements...
It's still a little disconcerting, if one of these cars parks two feet out of its zone, it, the whole plan falls apart.
Well, you lose a car, you lose a car.
In, in the back, you're referring?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you, I mean, uh, my client's not, he, he will not be an absentee landlord, uh, these spaces will be lined, you know, and, uh, and he'll, he'll have to get on it, like, like any other, you know, you have to enforce these things.
Counselor, you know, I'd like, that building really is an eyesore, the whole building, the whole place is, really, and, 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 be in Adams Street, be in that condition, it'd be mind-blowing, to begin with, that it's done over the years, and someone hasn't done something...
For years.
Right, for a hundred years.
There's limitations, the, the, the lot is not big.
I know, I know.
The lot is not big.
But you think someone would, I don't know, uh, ripped it down and built some ice fund out?
Where do you park?
Underneath.
Under, yeah. It's expensive, wrong position, subterranean, you know?
It is, and right now, the cost of, of the residential is very high, so it's, it's probably doable right now. Uh, I, I, I don't know, I really don't, I just, I just, that place is hard, really, it's just a hard place to park, get in and out of.
I can't, I can't stress enough, I can't, what had existed there for years, this will be certainly less detrimental.
The world fades, hasn't it? I used to get out of a house next to six minutes, and I'd be in Boston, it'd take me sixty minutes to get off the walls and beat, so life is change.
Do you have any renditions or renderings of the exterior?
Fill me with your...
Uh, we, we do, but, you know, he did not do any renderings.
Oh, you mean, like, a flat elevation?
No, no, what, what, what are you putting on the outside, what are you doing, you remodeling it, what are you doing with the building, do you just think, where do we gotta?
We're gonna replace all these, uh, these here, uh, vinyl sides, which will be a vinyl, uh, but the form itself's gonna, gonna change.
Why vinyl?
It, it's currently vinyl.
I know, why not something like hottie plank or something? You're in Adams Street.
We can do that, we can do that.
He will, he will do that.
Something nice, right on, right on Adams Street, that building should look nice, it really should, for what it is.
Yeah, if you want to, yeah, we can do it.
You know, certainly the initial cost will be converting to the two residential units, but...
Yeah, I know, and then you've got an office, and if it's all done over nice hottie plank, really nice, and it looks nice over building, you could, you could, you could sell it.
I agree.
It does, it does.
I agree.
So, yeah, I'd be in favor of that, I really would, if he, if he wants to do the outside of hottie plank, and do a nice job, and still make a nice person, yeah.
Do you have a color too, or?
No, I'm fine, Counselor.
Would you advise your commercial, uh...
Is that gonna be a concrete block, uh, on the side elevation?
It's currently concrete block, yeah.
Could you change that?
We could change it more.
Maybe, maybe look...
Maybe match it up with the hottie?
Yeah.
Concrete block, that's what it feels to me.
It's very nice.
And certainly some adding of landscape as well, you know, we'll, we'll hide that, or they, they're selling this out.
Can we advise a commercial tenant not to, uh, have his customers park, or anybody park on Eddie Street?
Yeah, I think certainly, uh...
To say, oh, do your best, you know, I mean, you got parking across the street, you don't have parking in front of Egan's, you don't have parking in front of, uh, Dairy Freeze.
They do, they do.
You got a bike lane now, so, you have parking next door, that's to the right of it, that's not in front of it. So if I'm facing the building, it's to the right of it, towards Teresa Road, but it's not on Adams, it's not directly in front, yeah, no, it's on Adams, but it's, yeah, the bike path's there now. Not saying it's not, I mean, but you got parking across the street, you know, I mean, in front of...
And I think that runs probably in front of this, the bike path runs in front of this building as well.
Yeah.
It's probably, uh, so it's, it's challenging.
I mean, just, just, you know, if you can advise, I mean, I don't think we can put a restriction on it.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think the operator of the, uh, the commercial space certainly conveys his clientele, you know, whatever that may be, uh, you know, where, where they need to park.
Sure. Because that's the, I mean, that's the challenge.
Thank you, Counselor.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, so anyone wanna speak in favor? First call, second call, third call? All the files here are closed, nothing new. Anyone opposed on the side, please, that's all, state your name and address on the record.
My name is Marian Flaherty, I live on Eddie Street. Uh, my neighbor's gonna tell you about the current parking congestion at the end of Eddie Street, they'll also tell you about the lack of maintenance at six fifty-seven Adams. Uh, I have a few concerns, none of which alone are noteworthy, but considered together, we hope you get careful scrutiny to any variances or approvals at six fifty-seven Adams. Last year, the first business-type proposal was for a massage parlor, that was not approved. Immediately after that, a nail salon was proposed. The first lawyer to come before this board on this matter was a lawyer who specializes or has several clients who have been arrested for running prostitution rings out of massage parlors and nail salons. There is a corporation on file opened by, again, Li Ron, with the Secretary of State, for New Elements Massage Therapy, doing business at six fifty-seven Adams Street. The corporation is still active with the Secretary of State, and has been no address change or dissolution request. We have seen the plans for this address, and there is access from the first-floor storefront to the living units upstairs. None of these items alone is a flag, but the totality of what I have shared is a concern to us. We hope the board will be extremely diligent in any approvals or conditions at this location. I have the Secretary of State filing many articles about the prostitution rings. My neighbor Linda...
At that address?
At that address.
Can I see that through?
Oh, not the prostitution rings.
Oh, okay.
The Secretary of State has the six fifty-seven Adams Street massage parlor, the, the lawyer that represented Mr. Chen...
I mean, he might.
Who might?
Really, can I see that?
Okay, yes. Uh, my neighbor Linda Corchard gave me a light up, and I loved her home, and the scanners, and we wanted to go all right.
Jack Milbrae, I remember his, if you withdrew it, it was the last minute.
Do we have limits on that, though? Like, if we make it an office space, it's, it's office only, like, you can't, you can't do retail, right? Yeah?
If you're on the occupancy...
Yeah, yeah.
You cannot go there and get in the...
Hi, I'm Joanna Patrangelo, I live on Eddie Street as well. Um, just to kinda capitalize upon what Marian was saying before, our major concerns really are parking, um, you know, the footprint that they have designed to put the parking spots that they have are just not feasible, and they're really unrealistic. We have a four family that's right next door to me, they have eight cars. There are three houses that also have three cars each, that's seventeen cars in the whole square foot, but not this much. I actually have some photographs of just trying to get down the street at four-thirty on a Monday before it's even packed, I mean, I couldn't really get by, um, it's so to put in the residential component with those apartments are just not feasible at this time. Uh, in terms of the overall maintenance, I mean, I know you had already mentioned that, um, I actually have a couple of prints out of the property before its purchase, it actually had landscaping to go along with it. We went to the community meeting, um, a couple of weeks ago, and we were told that the majority of the money was actually gonna be spent on the inside, so about eighty percent, um, of the inside was gonna be renovated, but there was not gonna be any funding that was gonna be for the outside, so all landscape, that's what we were told at the meeting.
I do.
By the lawyers. Yeah, yeah, because we asked that. Um, so that is a concern, these, this is the way it was before, pitches, nice landscaping, couple of bushes.
Yeah, can I see that? I just wanna see what they gave you.
Well, this is what I had printed out online.
No, I just wanna see what they gave you.
That's where it was at, and this is what I just took about five o'clock this afternoon. So everything has been...
Yeah, I know, I know.
But that's the way it was before.
I just wanted to know my...
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, so that is certainly a concern, um, as Marian had talked about, in terms of the business, um, that had been filed for with, um, the Secretary of State, that is certainly a question that just kinda makes us wonder, you know, we were told at the meeting, no, that they were not gonna be doing what, that it was, so, but we just kinda wanted to bring that to a concern. Um, I mean, really, you know, we have many, many people that are on our street that are lifelong residents, they've been there forty, fifty years, we just wanna be able to preserve the community. Um, this residence is really the gateway for our street, and to have an establishment that looks like that, that doesn't, that's not, that's not the fancy charm.
No.
So, we, you know, whatever, I would recommend that maintenance be done to the property first before it even is considered for the apartments. So we're just asking you not to go in favor of the parents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Robert Kirk, this is 24th Street. I'll try not to read anything, say, because the time is short. We've been up here a couple of times going over this, and as you said, we had a community meeting, we were able to see some of the things. I was there, unfortunately, that community meeting left with more questions than answers. Specifically about the renovations that are evidently going to happen. I asked about project plans, I asked about dollar numbers, they don't have any. They said 85% would be renovated on the interior. I don't know what that means, 85% of what? So, you know, when we talk about trying to make changes to something to suit residential, I like the idea of residential, but I frankly, I'm sorry, I can't give them the benefit of the doubt. When we noted other properties that the landlord owns, if you look at those properties on Google Earth, there's open trash barrels in the front. Okay, it can be a rat problem or a wet issue, it's a sanitary issue, but it's also a quality of life issue, okay? On top of that, we asked about management companies, who manages these properties? They don't have management companies. And the tenants shovel snow at these residencies. Who's going to pull weeds once we renovate this thing, landscape? Who's going to shovel snow? Who's going to keep the property? It's already falling apart since we, since you bought it. And that was when he was trying to rent it. What happens once we have somebody in there? So I have a lot more questions than answers as far as that, aside from the parking and the other issues that Marian elicited. So I also don't understand the economic comment on like why you can't remove the commercial eyesore on the side? Because it was not there originally and was added in by somebody else. If the reality of what you pay for a property dictates that you have to maximize and get variances to put in as much as possible, then you overpaid. But that's not the ZPA's fault, it's not our fault or their fault.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
John Nortofale, 62 Ground Wall Road.
This is interesting, because we just had a case earlier, 172 Vassal, where you told a client that you bought a property that was only a two-family, even though you thought it was a three-family. Well, if you look at the property record card, this is two occupants, okay? I remember that building my whole life, okay? I don't think there's ever been three tenants in that building at one time. People used to rent that whole building and use that whole side for one thing. Sometimes they would even use the whole building for, you know, it was a real estate building, it was remaxed for a while. So they're asking you to make a three unit into another three unit? I mean, it is a two unit now. So, I mean, they're asking you something that isn't even correct. So you honestly cannot, you know, I mean, I ask you to ask Mr. Duker over there if the property record card means something. I mean, if it's a two occupancy, if you grant them this variance, they'll come back and they'll say, you know what? We want to take that third commercial unit and we want to make that into a studio apartment and we want to have a three family. I mean, I think earlier in the evening too, that we just granted a variance to make a two family in Ward 1. So I'm kind of confused, but I would say that based on this, just deny this as written, because you can't convert a three into a two if you already only have a two. So they have a two, so if they want to convert the two commercial units, and that's all they have right now, two commercial units, if they want to convert that into two residential units, if they need a variance to do that, then grant them that variance to give them two residential units. I mean, this kind of doesn't make any sense, considering you told someone earlier this evening that they bought a two family. So these people bought something, they bought a two unit, they didn't buy a three unit, okay?
Thank you, John.
Okay, that's my point, okay? Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else pulling one aside? All the files are getting close. I always thought they had all three units in that place, and that's what I said, and that's what I took the words of.
Probably God does say two.
Huh?
Probably God does say two.
And we got a problem.
That's on the application as well.
Pretty neutral, you know?
Counsel, do you have a copy of the card?
So, can you, do you have any units over there?
Commercial units? It's always been my understanding there were a minimal three different businesses operating.
Actually, I just got to look at what you're paying taxes on down, what was, so this thing got over tonight, but we're going to...
I think it's a conversion, but I'm not sure it matters. I mean, we're converting it, we're converting it to two residential units and a commercial unit.
Says occupancy two on our ledger, yeah. So we got a problem. So let me look at the card, let me look at the city.
I would ask Mr. Duker, I'm not sure that has any bearing this evening.
Well, I think it has a lot of bearing on what we do and what we think people and what people's words are. That's what we think, counsel. Not saying nothing, but I'm going to say, are you done? You all set?
Yeah, I...
So what I'm...
If I may, I don't believe that has any bearing this evening. You listen to the present council.
Are you done, you said, yeah?
I didn't say yes.
You said, yeah, you go, yeah. Go ahead, speak.
Again, I don't think it has any bearing this evening, if it's a two unit or a three unit. We're converting the entire use of the property to two residential units and the 400 square foot of commercial units. That was the proposal, you've listened to...
I should have pulled, but listen to it.
So I'm not sure what, going back to the card, has any bearing on the board's decision this evening. I'm not sure what that will do.
Are you all set? Thank you, counsel. Now, let me put this up, April 24th, is our card's called. Let's see what this property was. And then merely look at, was that two commercial places, three commercial places? What was there? I'll get the background on that whole building and what the taxes were. And it has a bearing to me, when someone was illegally running a three unit with a two unit building and then adding a commercial space illegally and doing it over years. That has a lot of bearing to me, how our neighborhoods have changed. It's like people that, you know, are two or three, or three or four, a single, two or three, one bedroom, it's like, where are you going to put these cars? And the parking's bad enough there as it is, just take a look at it. If it's real, it's real, if it ain't real, to me, that just, that makes me think what's going on. Shame on Quincy if it hasn't been taxed, that's, you know, that's what I say.
Eddy Street can't handle another one more car on the side.
No, they can't, they can't, but it's Adams Street. Where will these people, the residents will park on that property, there's minimum, minimum of five spots in that place. Well, it doesn't matter, it happens everywhere. You know? You just find a place for the snow, you get it out.
You have residential parking, I'm not, but that's not my concern.
Right, that's not my concern either, I mean, you've got one commercial spot parked. So there's at least five minimum unlocked, could put six, if people parked, if people were together, but that's something I just want to look at the, I want to look at the history of this property. I mean, I drove by my whole life, but I don't know the history of the property itself, where it went. A lot of people in that neighborhood give me a lot of insight on that property since they've lived there thirty or forty years. We'll look at the tax record and everything else. Why don't we do that? And then you can have the applicant show us facelift drawings and put the hottie plank on the outside and a landscaping plan. So we have it and it's in black and white. So it's going to be done the outside, what the landscaping's going to be. I'm going to have to look at maybe money's on or money ain't gone. And we'll look at 424, how's that? Does that work? There you go. 424 program? The tents about to bang, so. Have a motion, please? Landscape drawings? Yeah, exterior plans and the rendition of what the building's going to look like. We'll go back with the other stuff. He's got, he said it fixed the building nice, so it's going to fix the building nice and you can make this work with the space. It was one thing, taxes and great.
Mr. Chen, I'd like to make a motion with regard to case number Z17-118, caption Lenny Chen for a special permit, variance finding to change of use from three commercial units to two, two bedroom units and one commercial retail unit on the premises number 657 Adams Street Quincy. Subject to the petitioner providing copies of the landscape drawings, exterior elevations, exterior plans and building renditions. Continue that case to April 24th, 2018.
Second. On the motion, CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so move. 424? We take five, we'll come right back. Further under tonight's agenda. I might be able to get a case in. D18-12, Michael Weber for variance to construct a front porch in the second level. Invite practical living space on the premise 1 Thursday and Ab. Captain, other representative here.
Good evening. My name is Michael Weber. I'd like to construct a second floor addition and add a porch. I'm asked for a variance, I've lived in this neighborhood my entire life and I want to continue to live in this neighborhood.
You'll spend some money, huh?
Yeah, in order to do so, it's...
I like the plant, I do, I think it's an actual...
You're going to have to, you know, you have to go up, but because of the photography, I can't go up off the back, there's a tall ledge up there.
Yeah.
So I really can really only go up and I can put a porch on the front. I've exhausted everything, I've tried to go off the side of the house.
The only thing I saw here was like these plants say moves 12, 12, 12, 12, 12, 12. The other set says 812, 812, which it looks like an 812. So I don't know which is right, which is wrong, but I think the 812 looks like it's not like the number.
Yeah.
Building in a small house. No, it was really nice, I liked the layout, I think it really did a nice job.
Thank you.
If you want to build. I have no questions.
No questions.
No, no.
Nice looking problem.
Thank you.
Goodbye, man.
Thanks, yeah. Mr. Duker?
Thank you, Mr. Chen. Just as a disclosure, Mike does work in the special services department. Just as a disclosure. What I want to say is, he did work hard with our zoning clinic to keep the house modest and he did take pretty good of the plan, so I just wanted to say that.
It is, it's case fully done, I think, thank you, Mr. Duker. Is there anyone that wants to have a seat?
Thank you.
Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor? First call, second call? Third call, no, correspondence?
Letter from Brian Palmucci.
Oh, a letter from Brian Palmucci. Now, we got to play this. Dear Chairman, ladies, that's a copy of the constituent mail and notify encouraging area residents to attend the Tuesday, March 13th, Home Board of Appeals, the application of Valiant Michael Weber, a special variance to construct a front porch in the second level to add additional living space on the premises number 1 Thursday and Ab. Roughly thirty-two large four residents received this letter regarding the option that the no opposition expressed to make. I reviewed the plans and believe the proposal would be beneficial to the aesthetic of the neighborhood and I would support Weber's application. Counselor Brian Palmucci.
Only cost you a sign.
The only one who was in a position of, I'll leave you off that one. Is there anyone opposed to run aside? First call, second call? Third call, no. I am all in favor, I think the plan is very nice.
I agree.
Agreed.
Agreed.
And a favor?
Please?
For Chairman in case number Z18-12, caption Michael Weber for a variance to construct a front porch in second level to provide practical living space on the premises number 1 Thursday and Ab in Quincy. Make a motion to allow...
Second?
Second.
On the motion, CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so move. Where is he?
I'm back.
Oh, set of plans? You want another set?
Sure.
Anyone don't want their plans? Another reason to, hard to get one. Ten different people want this set. Form of a...
Hey, go, Michael.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Don't have another.
Brother running tonight's agenda, D18-13, Betty Yu for Yao, I'm sorry, for variance to add a second floor kitchen to the living unit on the premise number 28 Holm Street. Captain and representative here.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to present a case with your wife, Betty Yao, this is my sister, Cindy. And the proposal is put down, we would like actually to convert the single family house at 20 Holm Street to a two family house.
That's not what this says. It says to add a second kitchen and living room here, in the living space.
I am not sure why it was put down that way, but the letter that I put down and also all the other things that I gave out is to convert the single family to two family.
Yeah, second page, yeah. The letter has it.
The letter has it, but it hasn't, it hasn't been, it hasn't been published like that and it has to come here to be...
I took it off the nature request on the application.
Right. Nature of the request is to add a second floor kitchen. Would I be in favor of that here, or too personal, right now? No. You can leave that living space, still put in a kitchen for your mother and still live there.
The reason is that, I want to just go back to some of the reasoning. I lived in the house for almost like 40 years. We grew up in the house, and then there were five of us and they moved out and I still live in that house. And then my father passed away and my mom is like an elderly aging person. And my oldest brother, who lives in Toronto, just retired. So he wants to come down to spend more time with mom and he has a wife. So we plan, we talk about, you know, what we want. So we want to make it into like a two family.
I'm just saying, we're making it two.
So you want to make this into a two family, that's why you want to come in. And we have to advertise it all over here, we can't, we can't hear it tonight because it's not, it hasn't been advertised in the paper for a two family. You can advertise to put in a new kitchen on the second floor.
So why is that, why was it like that way?
You see where it says...
Because here's what you said. Hunter, advocate, advocate for the total audience, what you want to do, it says, nature of the request, add second kitchen for mother, same amount of bedrooms. That's all you put, you didn't put, add to make it a two family.
I'm sorry, go there. I did not know this myself when I went to the clinic, at the special service. So I...
But we have to advertise it as a two family if you're going to do that. And we'll just let this request go, or withdraw without prejudice as it was advertised wrong and re-advertise it again, which will, you'll have to re-file.
So would there be a chance that I can be scheduled for next time or...
No, it has to be in the paper twice, two weeks, two different times, correct?
Do you have a deadline this Thursday for the second meeting in April?
27th, you could be here, you get it 25.
By 24.
Thursday, 24.
I personally cannot make it because I have to go to China with my brother to...
Want to do it with me?
Yeah, I have to.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
Yeah, I feel so irresponsible. She did come to the clinic and I did know that she was going to be a two family. I had realized that it was advertised like that and I know the court went awful when she wrote. So I would be willing to get that advertised and re-advertise it, the city will take that across.
Cross, okay.
And get it done.
Okay.
So as early as...
Eight, May, because she's going to be away, so it'd be like May, what is the meeting, May?
There's May 8th and 27th.
May 8th or 22nd.
Yeah, I will remind until the 15th.
Of May?
Yeah.
You want to do it 22nd?
If I may, yes.
Okay.
Will that work, please, for the use of...
Yes, yeah.
May 22nd, if we could. We'll put that on now, but that has to be filed by Thursday.
Okay, yes, yes, yes.
Oh, no, no, May, no, no, it doesn't.
I'll take care of it, though.
You're funny about it.
We'll take care of it, I'll, I'll... So I'm getting smart, I'll...
We'll get it refiled.
That's all right, okay.
Thank you. Yeah, just to... No, we just think I, or just withdraw without prejudice because it's a mistake in the file.
Or a new.
We just put it was a mistake in the file, it's been a two family, we draw it up. That's the motion, we draw it up.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, whether you got to case number Z18-13, Captain Betty Yao for a variance to add a second kitchen for additional living unit on the premises number 28 Holm Street Quincy. Make a motion to allow the withdrawal of the case without prejudice.
You have the city...
I have the city not refiled as a request for two family.
Second? On the motion, CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so move.
Make a motion to review the meetings.
On the motion, CNN, all in favor? Opposed, so move. Thank you, gentlemen.